The following program is sponsored by The Greek, Ely's Radio Shack, Dealer 570 Altman in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Regional Planning Commission Meeting, August 18th, 2021.
You can hear it, George.
What's that?
Is this good? I think it's good.
All in good? Alright, Mike, thank you. Okay. Calling the meeting to order. Carol, if you can lead us to the pledge?
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You ready? This is the Regional Planning Commission Meeting. Public comment during Regional Planning Commission will be all matters, both on and off the agenda, and will be limited to three minutes per person. The commission deserves the right to reduce the time or limit the total time allowed for public comment. Comments during discussion items may not be accepted from the general public. Following, the commission may prohibit comment if the content of the comments are woefully disruptive of the meetings by being dislairous, offensive, inflammatory, irrational, or amounting to personal attacks, interfering with the rights of other speakers. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing on the agenda items and/or attend make comments on the item at the commission meeting. So, that being said, we open up to public comments.
Good evening. I introduce myself. I'm Scott Sampson, and I live next door to Andy in April Bath. And I appreciate you guys sending me a certified mail and inviting me to come down and speak to you guys. I'm here fully supportive of their business. I do have a concern. I bought the property in 1997 down there, and 24 years now. That road, a geek little history about Pinwheel Lane. Pinwheel Lane at one time was just a little two-track road that went down there, and some of the owner down there took some of his personal money and brought that road up to county standard in White Pine County, and accepted that road and took that road over. And the 24 years that I've lived down there, I've seen the grader once, lucky sometimes twice a year, and maybe every seven or eight years, we get a little bit of mag chloride sprayed on that road. And I've been in contact with the county to try to get that road upgraded, and I can personally tell you, that business was originally started by a gentleman called Bernie Metcalf, and I was his nephew, and me and him planned that business, and we built that business. And me and my wife, Shawna, I've worked there for 10 years, and I know that that can be a very successful business, and I know how much traffic, horse traders and horses and semis, and I've seen over the 24 years, the road has deteriorated to a point, it's my private road that goes, Cobble Creek that tees off to it, is much better condition than the county road, and when it gets wet, it's just four inches of solid mud. And I would just like to know, I'd just like to make a recommendation that Andy in April and the new owners of the business down there are going to run it, I'd just like to make a suggestion that they make contact with Mr. Bill Calderwood and Mr. Martin Trout, and let them know that what their intentions are of opening that up, and that possibly there could be a large number, you know, a large amount of traffic on there, and let them know that, you know, with the impact, that they would, you know, please look at that impact on Pinwheel Lane, and maybe take a look at upgrading it, getting some gravel on it, making it so that horse traders and that extra added traffic on there can get in and out of there safely. Andy's sitting here, he, I'm kind of the spokesman for the, all the neighbors down there, and every time the road gets graded, I personally text the county guys and let them know, so...
Okay. Thanks for letting us know, I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Good luck.
Okay, more public comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I've been received of your letter dated July 22nd, 2021, in regards to specific issues, but, you know, you have a good secretary, takes excellent minutes, you've got years of my concerns, and yet you want me to do your homework for you. You better look at the minutes. I'm going to bring things to you, but I don't like being slight. I make an effort to close my business, come down here, and then you want me to do your homework too. Recently, the Endo took away my access to properties that I have on Great Basin Boulevard, not only me, but my brothers and also Terry and Gus. In reading their administrative code regarding access 2.6, it states all the building property owners are record, public shall be notified by the department or the appropriate local authority of the intent to prepare the plan, its purpose and opportunities to participate in the planning process, at least one advertised public hearing shall be held. That was done, but they did not talk to the property owners. I did not know that I was going to lose an access that I've had for 20-some years, the same with my brothers. Also goes on to 2.7 regarding disabled facilities, all proposed developments along the state highway must take into consideration and comply with all local, state, and federal standards for these facilities, including but not limited to the Nevada Department of Transportation, complete streets policy number five, the Americans with Disability Act, Transition Plan Six, the Nevada Department of Transportation's Pedestrian Safety Improvement Evaluation Guide Seven, and the Proposed Access Guidelines for Pedestrian Facilities in the Right-of-Way. Existing facilities such as sidewalks, bike lanes, or bypasses will be perpetrated, excuse me, and new facilities will be installed as needed. You need to walk along that program. It is not ADA compatible. New facility, new installation, and it's half-baked, needs to be addressed. In the past, I've talked to a gentleman by the name of Peter Shaw, compliance officer, Americans with Disability Act, State of Nevada Endo, and that was back in 2019, when I had a concern on the swimming pool and whether that streaked in ADA access to the walkway there, which didn't happen. Also, on February 2009, I gave the county concerns in regards to Section 1985, Type 42, civil rights concerns. Handicap have some rights. That's all, 2009, here we are, 2021. I'm concerned about the selective enforcement with building permits here, the community choir has yet to get a permit, yet your city code says, "Plan review fees and building permit fees will be applied fairly to all persons." I've had made 30 trips up to City Hall, we get a permit, I got it, the first one was a hundred and, excuse me, $321. Thankfully, reevaluated and it come down to 47, but if others aren't paying, don't expect me to pay, and don't expect me to keep coming 30 different times to pay for a permit when no one else does. If you have a problem, you need to address it, Mr. Chairman.
We'll pick you up later on. Thank you, George.
I'll be back.
Any more public comment? Okay, at this point, we will go on to public hearing. For a conditional, and this is item A, conditional special use permit application, applicants Rick Pirigo and Jessica Trask, DBA Pirigo Butcher Shop, wish to use the facilities on the property for the slaughter and processing of livestock. Property address is 376 East Pinwheel Lane, Ely, Nevada, Section 14 Township 16 North, Range 63 East. The assessment parcel number is 010-490-09. Owners of the property are Andrew D. and April in Bath. Can I have public hearing on that?
Hi, guys. I'm Jessica Trask, and it's my dad and I that are looking to open this butcher shop. And basically with COVID, we just saw a bottleneck of butcher shops, we're trying to get your livestock in in the time of matter, so we're just trying to kind of fill that gap in our county. So, we approached Andy in April about it and are hoping to keep going. We've been working with the Nevada Department of Ag and the Nevada Bureau of Water Pollution on this as well, and so they said our last stop is just you guys, so we appreciate you guys hearing us out. Thank you.
Thank you.
And any other comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have property in that general area, and I really don't have a problem with this. My concern is, since this was a butcher shop before, did they not give zone at that time for that property, and did it go away, and was it rezoned, and now these people have to come back for a special use permit? I'd like to know that, because Bernie Metcalf was there for years.
Does it be my case?
So I can say that they actually never did have to worry about applying through the county before the USDA kind of handled those inspections and dealt with that, but now that things have kind of changed in that department, the USDA, and now having the state get involved a little bit with some of these inspections and things like that, and so now, now since the state is getting involved, and the county is also involved, and so we're starting, they're starting that process kind of over again for pretty much all intensive purposes.
Okay, and I don't have a problem with USDA requirements, it's just that since the property was zoned, or it was not zoned for a butcher shop at that time, because my concern is it's changed hands, and I don't want people paying for something that was already there, whether it's me or anyone else.
So, there was no zoning for, there's no zoning for just being a butcher shop?
Okay, was there a special use permit in the past then?
No, there never was.
Huh, Carol, you're slipping. Carol, since I've gotten that guy, I might have to put the word at home, but some of that information on. You need to be consistent. How many times have I told you that?
About a thousand and two.
Yeah, make it three. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any more input? Okay, go to A, item two, Statement of Possible Action, Approval of Conditional Special Use Permit, Application Application for Pirigo, Jessica Trask, DBA Pirigo Butcher Shop, wish to use the facilities on the property for the slaughter, processing, and livestock. Property address 376 East Pinwheel Lane, Ely, Nevada, Section 14 Township 16 North, Range 63 East. Assessment parcel number is 010-490-09. Owners of the property are Andrew D. and April in Bath. So, I'll open that up for board.
Okay, Andy is abstaining.
Now, any discussion?
I would like to say, I think this is awesome, and definitely a good service that we could use here, and I am all for this, so that's kind of my take on that. I checked out your Facebook page, absolutely love what you guys do.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, drove by out there just a couple of days ago, out in place, and saw the old banner up there from the other processing outfit, so it makes logical sense for me.
I have one point of protest. I believe the commission needs to establish that this special use permit won't endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare.
Okay.
And they have all the required permits for the Bath conditions.
Yeah, could you step up?
Sorry, I didn't hear the question. Hold the question.
Well, you have all your permits and met all the conditions required by either USDA or state and local authorities.
So, the Nevada Department of Ag is the one that will limit, and so they aren't going to grant us the permit, so we have this, and then we'll get our final permit from them. So, this is their last step to grant us that.
So, the business won't operate until it has?
Absolutely, yep.
So, I hear there was a question on the water contamination, things like that, and I've been saying from processing, the remains, I guess, of the animal, those are taken to the county landfill, or city landfill?
Right, so the Bureau of Water Pollution looked at this, and so with the size of the facility, since it's a smaller one, we can only do so much animals a month, so it's within the limit to go ahead and leave it on the septic system that it is on, we don't have to build a separate one, and they are not worried about it polluting any water, especially what's laying around it.
But the actual carcasses, those are actually, those are, the remains are taken out too, to the county or the city landfill?
Right.
Okay, yeah.
I think that's satisfactory.
Satisfactory? Okay, good. My first question to you. Okay, any other comments or input?
I remember when the old women was out there, we worked with them a little bit on it, and they have a lot of business, and it worked really well. I understand the problem with the road condition out there, because the dirt road gets not paved, and they really, something really needs to be done to upgrade it, especially if the traffic increases very much, just to make it more safe for people traveling. If you're howling an animal out there, sometimes things get a little out of sync, or when you're traveling over slick roads or muddy roads or something, you have that kind of load on, so I would be very much in favor of, if we could, putting a condition, not necessarily it has to be done, but we would like to see the county who is responsible for the roads, upgrade that one as much as possible.
Okay. Okay, so, shall we vote on this with the condition that we put forward a comment to the county to upgrade the road?
Or just a recommendation?
Not pursuant to that condition, no.
I'm not sure if it's a good condition, but it's a recommendation.
A recommendation?
We can make a condition on that, because it's not up to us to maintain that road, but we can make a recommendation that because we're going, they're probably going to see X amount of traffic out there, and the concerns of the neighbors, then that would be one thing that we would like to see.
So, we only suggest that improvement is done.
I have one question. How many homes are out in that area that utilize that road?
There's six on that road.
Actually, there's seven residents there.
That you access that road, and that's our only access?
Yeah, it's our only access in and out.
Yeah, it's pretty spread out, but there is access through the side roads.
And also, that's the only road, one of the two roads in that whole area that are unpaid. There's two roads, there's that road and the road behind Warren Curses, that are the two roads in that whole area that are unpaid.
Okay.
Just a little thinking about.
So, I guess at this point, I'll put this up for a vote, all those in favor.
I'm going to make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve with a suggestion to upgrade, improve, and maintain the road better than what has been done now.
Okay. Got a motion for Jason, and do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Let's take a vote, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passed, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, item B. Statement of Possible Action, Approval of Parcel Map. Application for JCR Development LLC, subject property is one quarter section, and north one half, Section 14 Township, North Range 63 East. General location of property is Park Edition Park Avenue and Avenue M, east of 17th Street, east Ely, Nevada, APN 002-271-23, 23002-271-24, 20002-271-25. Purpose is to merge and re-subdivide the parcels.
Good afternoon. Those are our surveyor records. This is ongoing process of subsequent parceling, or subdivision for JCR. They have made a few changes since last time I was here, so we're actually taking one lot out. Their floor plans didn't fit, the floor plans that they wanted to use that met the county requirement for the garage size with the side of the back, so we had to invent one of the lots, and this is the final couple maps to finish that process. I have some graded exhibits, if anybody would like to see the graded plans for each lot. That was one of the questions last time.
So, Buzz, could you give us a, it's going to be a lot easier to show us, show you on that map, which lot this has between them.
So, this would be the first one in the series. Last time I was in here, we created a single parcel, and then three remainder parcels. Those lines weren't going to work, but we filled out the rest of this, so on this map, we're just creating the first lot, two remainder parcels, subdivide with the next two lots.
So, that's item 11? We're doing?
Lot 11 would be the first billable lot for this parcel, the two remainders.
Yeah, because I noticed we got foundation already laid down on that one side.
Yeah, this one's already been recorded, here's a building committee issue on that, so we're building on that one.
So, I guess, we'll leave this as agenda item, but Lee, is there any questions at this point that you have? I know we had the communication issue a couple meetings ago, and so I just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page, all parties are happy.
Lee Walker, building official, City of Ely, White Pine County. No, there's no concerns at this point. Buzz has been pretty good about supplying the rest, and like he said, there is a house on Lot 12 being built right now. It was stated, it was noticed by Land Examiner Brad Christensen, as of right now, that that house was, that proposed at first was too big, it either needed to be downsized or something of that nature, but, you know.
So, it was more of a setback thing, it was creating a setback?
Yeah, it didn't mean the setback.
Okay, I got you, okay.
And so, you know, they did what they needed to do necessary, and then this is the route they're going to go, and we have no issues with it.
Rating issues, we're all good with all that stuff? Okay, all right.
And this seems to be a sort of gradual, sort of sequential thing here, so we're breaking this into two sections, so each one of those can then be subdivided into four parcels each as we go along through the other thing.
Yes, yes, correct. So, this is the first agenda item that breaks these ones down, and then there's another one that breaks them down.
Right, right. Okay, so, because that's the point of first.
One still.
Yeah, one rock at a time.
Sorry, I had a great copy for everybody that's out there. The dash line on there is the setback line showing that the house was printed, that the house was printed.
Right. So, this is for each of those?
Yeah, for each of the lots, yeah, running across the table tonight.
Yeah.
So, that's the same, all homes going in?
Right.
Good thing.
Long time coming.
That's been a process, for sure. You know, I don't have any other questions at this point.
No. Do you have a question for George?
I do. The manhole in, I believe they're for sewer, in the street appear to be two and a half feet above street level. Do they plan on building the street up to that level, or is that just temporary?
All the manholes that were existing, if their rim elevation doesn't match our planned grade, they'll be adjusting those rim elevations.
They weren't two and a half feet two weeks ago, three weeks ago?
Yeah, I haven't been on site, so I really couldn't comment on it.
Okay, that's a concern.
The grades to be brought up to that level, so...
It's a lot of dirt.
Yeah, that probably is the case, without the plans in front of me, with the profile drawing, I really couldn't comment on it.
Right.
The plan would be to adjust all the rim grades up to our proposed finished grade.
Okay. Any more comment, special? Can I hear a motion on item B?
I move to approve. I'm a B.
I'll second the approval.
Okay, vote by Andy and seconded by Jason. Have a vote, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, item B is passed. We can move on to item C. Statement of Possible Action, Approval of Parcel Map,申请JCR Development, the subject property is one quarter section, one half, Section 14 Township 16 North, Range 63 East. General location of the property is the Park Edition Park Avenue and Avenue M, east of 17th Street, east Ely, Nevada, APN 002-271-23, 20002-271-24. Purpose is to merge and re-subdivide the parcels.
This would be the next subsequent, the previous map created these two larger parcels, this map, is it breaking the first parcel down to the four final?
Okay. That's pretty straightforward.
Are you breaking them down because you have prospective buyers? Or is that a secret? The way Cat learned?
Well, I really don't know if they have prospective buyers or not, but we're trying to get through the process, so when a buyer does come up, we don't have to submit a map, come for you guys, do one parcel, or that nature, so if we can get the parcels all finalized, it's just one more step that we don't have to jump over later on as they start selling those homes.
Good thinking.
I believe they're on track with, I believe they had to do three houses for the first year right around there with the county agreement, and I think they're on track with that right now.
Buzz, that 2C1 for the future, obviously, that, is that going to give you four and other lots about 82 feet width? Will that be pretty consistent?
Yeah, for the width on these, the 82.86, that's for the 1,860 square foot home, and then the 86-foot lots are for the larger one, which I think is 2160, it's the square meters.
You got the back?
That was next, yeah, talking about that.
Oh, that's fine.
Okay.
No questions, I move.
Are, are you breaking them down because you have prospective buyers? Or is that a secret? The way Gattler?
Well, I really don't know if they have prospective buyers or not, but we're trying to get through the process, so when a buyer does come up, we don't have to submit a map, come before you guys, do one parcel, or that nature. So if we can get the parcels all finalized, it's just one, one more step that we don't have to jump over later on as they start selling those homes.
Good thinking.
I believe they're on track with, I believe they had to do three houses for the first year, right around there, with the county agreement, and I think they're on track with that right now.
Buzz, that two C one for the future, obviously, that, is that gonna, is that gonna give you, are four another lots about eighty-three feet width? Will that be pretty consistent?
Yeah, for the, for the width on these, the eighty-two point eight-six, that's for the eighteen hundred and sixty square foot home, and then the eighty-six foot lots are for the larger one, which I think is twenty-one sixty. It's the square meters.
You got the best.
That was next.
Oh, that's fine. Okay.
Okay. No questions, I move to approve.
I'd like to second that.
Okay. We have a motion, I do, and second, Leah. All those in favor, write in. C. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Now, we go on to item D. Discussion for possible action, approval of parcel map. Application is intermountain ranges, limited. Subject property is one quarter section northwest, section two southeast, section thirty-five township, twenty-two north, and twenty-three north range sixty-two east. Stage canyon state, White Fine County Road number eighteen, Nevada APN zero zero eight dash six thirty dash zero four, dash zero zero, no, zero zero eight dash six twenty dash zero five, and zero zero eight dash six twenty dash zero seven, and zero zero eight dash six twenty dash oh six. Purpose of this map is to merge and re-subdivide the parcels.
And the final map in this sequence is a further subdivision of the previous parcel, two C dash one, breaking it down to its final configuration of the last four lots on that block.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have no comments. I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion approved from Jason. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Andy seconds. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? As unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Say again. Okay. Item E, discussion for possible action, approval of parcel map. Application is intermountain ranges, limited. Subject property is one quarter section northwest, section two southeast, section thirty-five township, twenty-two north, and twenty-three north range sixty-two east. Stage canyon state, White Fine County Road number eighteen, Nevada APN zero zero eight dash six thirty dash zero four, dash zero zero, no, zero zero eight dash six twenty dash zero five, and zero zero eight dash six twenty dash zero seven, and zero zero eight dash six twenty dash oh six. Purpose of this map is to merge and re-subdivide the parcels.
Correct. The original division of large parcels means, didn't really take into account any of the topography or the existing road, so you had slivers of parcels on both sides of the road. This puts the whole parcels on one side of the road or the other, and improves all their access points. Gives them a few more, actually gives them a few more options for access points along the road. That, that's really all it's doing. We're not creating any additional parcels. We're just reconfiguring the lines to fit the county road.
Makes sense.
Buzz, I see one of the road department's recommendation was for a twenty-foot culvert in there with, let's see, installation of a drainage culvert, twenty-foot minimum in length, that additional access is granted, so.
Yeah, we, the road department, no, that's not a concern at all. The road department kind of puts that blanket statement on anything that's accessing their road where they're gonna make an improvement or driveway entrance off of those.
Right.
I think that would come probably not so much at the parceling phase, but more at building permit phase, to make sure that a culvert was installed, got approved by the road department.
Okay.
Okay, do we have any more comment or input?
Is this one that came before us earlier on, or is there something more out in that area that was done, do you know? It seems familiar to me.
I haven't done anything. The original division of large parcels was done by David Bromos. You might have been on the board at that time, I don't know.
I would be, Buzz.
It was, oh, I don't know, maybe 2010, maybe a little bit before then was the last time I had it. This one, it's original division.
Okay. Have any more input in this? Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Okay, Carol moves to approve.
I'll second it.
Jason seconds. And so, vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Place here. Okay, we're going to item F. Discussion for possible action, approval of parcel map. Applicants are Bowman Family Trust and JV Family Trust. Subject property is one quarter section southwest, section nineteen township, eighteen north range sixty-five east, fifty-four ninety-five north, Duck Creek Highway, Nevada APN zero one zero dash two hundred dash twenty-three, zero one zero dash two hundred dash twenty-four, and zero one zero dash two hundred dash twenty-six. Purpose of the map is to adjust the laundry lines.
The Bowman Brothers had, previously acquired two parcels out there, and they've both been built homes on those parcels, but they between their parcels with another ten acre parcel, which after some time, they have that part, they purchased that parcel. So really, all they're doing is consolidating the three parcels back down to two, each taking five acres of the ten acre parcel, with the net result of two larger parcels instead of the three individual parcels.
Okay. Looks pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't have any questions.
Yeah.
So it's pretty, it's pretty simple.
No additional access points. They're just moving their fence line so they can be neighbors now.
Great soul.
Of course.
Two brothers.
If I have any questions, I will go ahead and move to approve.
Okay, Leah moves to approve this. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Yeah, Carol seconds. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Not hearing. And unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you again. Okay, go on to item B. Discussion only regarding building and zoning codes within the city of Eli and White Fine County. Anybody here on the commission have any comments?
I actually thought some of the home they had was gonna look rather technical and advanced. So, next time I'll have a recipe for it, just to get away, and then, just a suggestion on maybe where we could start, what we should start looking at as to whether it's something that we think might need some work, or we think it's okay, move forward that way, rather than just waiting for somebody to find one that they think needs to be changed. Kind of went through them one at a time, and then the chances that we've known that was hopefully going to talk about, and if they had any questions or concerns, we can drop forward to them with the meeting. If not, we would say we didn't like the way it is, we don't see any changes, and move on to the next ones, just so we get acquainted with everything that's in here. I know there are some things that probably need tweaking one way or the other, and a couple of them that need to be fixed, we need that way, at least, though, if we did it that way, maybe we could get that office, or I'm hoping Ray or.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other comments of this? Okay, move on to item H. Discussion for possible action, approval of minutes from regional planning commission meeting held July twenty-first, twenty twenty-one.
I, I have no questions.
I didn't find anything.
Didn't catch anything?
Didn't catch anything.
My God.
Yeah.
Amazing. Alright. And with that being noted, I will ask for motion.
I'm moved.
Andy.
Andy, Andy moves. Jason seconds to approve the minute from last meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It is approved. Okay, we move on to public comment. Hear your votes and comments to the public, if any, and discussion of those comments not actually taken by matter of reason of this item, the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on agenda as an item upon which action will be taken. NRS two forty-one dash two oh zero two zero, two C three. Okay. Any public comment?
Lee, you wanna do this? I wanna have three minutes. Do you wanna do the rest of them?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Need a gooseneck. This is not good for short or tall people. Mr. Chairman, at the last meeting, I asked if I could do this, permits that may have been given up to RVs. I've not gotten that. I've not gotten a permit so I can rent my properties or my families. Need to address that. Also, it was a chip seal project done on Avenue D. No curb, no gutter, no sidewalk. Again, we have codes in the city. They all pertain to everybody, not some. You can't have it half-baked. And another adjective I could use, but my good friend Nicole is here. And looking back at some of the materials that you've been addressed earlier, Mr. Chairman, I've got an item here regarding six eighty-seven Almond Street, no atmospheric vacuum breaker, no pressure vacuum breaker, no reduced pressure backflow preventer. That goes back to two thousand and six. Going back to two thousand and twenty, I brought the concern, Mrs. McKenzie's not ADA compliant to this date. Again, we have rules and regulations. Once you put up the sign lock, it meets minimum code. I don't care if she is compliant or commission, she has an obligation. I reported a home, three twelve, no, three twelve, three eighteen, I think it is, on Eli Avenue. No permit, still half-baked, an attractive nuisance. The doors are open. You guys need to address that. I talked about Veterans Park, we putting up a walkway. You have to have ADA access from the park, not a step. August sixteenth, two thousand and six, I got a notice from Mr. Alworth when I was mayor in regulation, regarding Regulation Chapter Three, Island Control Article A, livestock and fowl. I had some goats, a friend of mine brought in to eat some weeds. I took them out within a very short time, but you folks to this day are not adhering to the rules and regulations. Forces in the state limits. Your home control office is not an entity. Why are you paying it? Why did you harass me? You have rules and regulations, you gotta enforce them. Other than that, if I find a way to file a complaint against all of you, I'm gonna do it. This is crazy. I don't think I had to go thirty times to get a building permit that I was wanting to pay, and others are getting a free fee. I talked to you in the past about members of city council and county commissions not complying with city codes. You got some too? Wait for your three minutes.
Okay. Wrap one around here.
I need some answers, and I want to progress in this community. I've been here a lot longer than most of you, and if I get stymied, it's not gonna be good for anybody. It needs to change.
Okay, time's up. Thank you, George.
Time's up is right.
Okay. Any other public comment?
Did the clock stop or is it just, what's the permit? Is that for change? Okay. That was not pertaining to anything.
Okay. Okay, no, no more public comment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion to adjourn from Jason. Do I hear a second? Okay, Leah's second. Okay, all those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Not heard? We are adjourned.
This has been a Georgetown production. George Chatchis reports.